Morning, girl. What I was doing all day.
Our wake time for transport. Can't get a helicopter in, you have to wait for an ambulance. Takes forever.
Call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Zebulon Board of Commissioners Work Session, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is now called to order. First, we will need the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxter. All in favor? First, we have the Police Quarterly Report. Manager Moore.
Mayor, good evening, Commissioners. I'll give a brief outline of tonight's presentation. First, as you mentioned, we'll have the Police Quarterly Report. The Quarterly Reports are items that we're bringing to you during your work session to provide more detail and more dialogue for you. Last month was the timeframe when police would typically have presented their Quarterly Report. The chief asked for a month delay so she could give you a year in review, so that's why I put Quarterly Report. You'll actually get a year in review. This will also be informative, I think, because it will give you a precursor of what to expect in the FY twenty-four budget. Second presentation, as we've talked to you individually, the Board of Adjustment, we're going to give you an assessment of how that board is functioning and some options available to you on how it can, how they can execute or how you can execute those statutory responsibilities in a different way. We will follow up from your November work session on the Main Street program. We'll provide more detailed information about how to set up the quasi, or the hybrid government nonprofit model. We'll also take this opportunity to talk with you about how to set up a municipal service district and then walk through in greater detail about the next steps between now and becoming a full-fledged member of the North Carolina Main Street community. Again, as follow-up to your November work session, we'll afford you any time to take feedback on this special events policy. Most notably, however, we're going to provide information and assessments to you on two events that have occurred since you adopted this special events policy. And then, as we have mentioned to you, the applicant for the joint public hearing scheduled for next week has asked for a postponement. We're going to give the board options and make a recommendation on what to do with that public hearing. And so with that, I'll recognize Chief Boykin for the Police Report.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and share some of our year-end data and progress towards some of our goals. Many of the items discussed tonight will be an update to information that you heard back in September when I provided an update to our strategic plan. I want to point out that end-of-year data is important to us because these are the numbers that we benchmark ourselves against as it relates to our historical data, what other and what, and how other agencies are doing, and state and national averages. When potential businesses or new residents are considering coming to the town of Zebulon and they're evaluating the safety of our town, this is the data that they look at. You'll also hear some foreshadowing as I share some insights into budget requests that you'll see in the coming months. You've heard me say repeatedly that I have a philosophy of policing that involves a commitment to proactive efforts. We spend a lot of time self-initiating calls and as a result, we hope to have positive influences on crime in our community. Our objective is to get in front of issues before they become problems. Our officers are out in the community every day, building relationships, establishing connections and networks, but we can't have a cop on every corner and we're hoping that these relationships help us add eyes to the community. So, we have folks who are helping us. When they see something, they say something. And this is why we put such an effort into that proactive policing. As a result of this, we're seeing property crimes generally decrease. As compared to what our neighbors and other agencies across the state and nation are experiencing, we're doing pretty well when it comes to our crime rate. We're putting community policing into practice and it's working for us. But, I want to share that there are some concerning things that we're seeing, in particular as it relates to this side, slide. What you see in blue, the violent crime rate, we're seeing an increase. No community wants to see increases in violent crime, but it's happening here and I'm concerned with our ability to keep pace with the growth. Two weeks ago, the Raleigh Police Chief released her fourth quarter crime statistics and mentioned that they are experiencing a fifty percent increase in violent crime and an alarming trend of an increase in juvenile crime. We are experiencing the same thing. Our violent crime rate is up sixty-five percent over last year and twenty percent over the three-year average, and this gives me concern. Juvenile crime in Zebulon has created a sense of unease amongst our community. I know this isn't new to you, we talked about it back in September. I am very thankful for the efforts of our Parks and Rec Department to bring youth service providers to the table, and several of you have been involved in that effort. I know that you appreciate the work that's being done there and I would just ask that if you are familiar with other organizations that can help us intervene with at-risk youth, you help to get them involved and at the table. Community policing has been helpful, but we're growing. We handled two and a half times the number of calls in twenty twenty-two as we did just three years ago. Our response time continues to be somewhat disappointing and an area for improvement. Our goal is to respond to emergencies in less than four and a half minutes. As you look at the recommendations for new developments, consider that for every one-hundred-and-fifty homes that comes to town, we need to be adding another officer if we want to keep pace with the growth. More homes means more residents, which means more calls for us and a longer response time. We continue to see shifts operated at minimum staffing but have made some nominal improvements over the last three years. You know that we spend a lot of time working to curb accidents. Traffic mitigation is one of our overarching goals and we try to be proactive with the traffic issues that we have here in town. The number of crashes has increased significantly in the last year, another illustration of our increased workload. What's more concerning than the number of crashes is the injuries that are associated with these crashes. In my professional opinion, we are seeing more speed-related crashes than we ever have before and speed-related crashes result in more significant injuries. Wake County is consistently one of the top, top-ranked counties for serious injuries and fatalities in the state. We partner with GHSP and other Wake County agencies to make traffic a priority and crash mitigation a priority. Because we have so many crashes that are speed-related, we do focus very heavily on mitigating that through speed enforcement. In September, I talked to you about the five top crash locations and we really try to focus on those locations. As of the end of the calendar year, those locations have adjusted a little bit. Two of our top five are in parking lots right over here at Wake Alon and at Walmart and they're related to the inability to back or inattention. So, very often, two people pulling out of a space at the same time. Those are harder to keep from happening, to, to prevent. We do have a better impact on preventing those crashes that are related to speed or often just trying to like hurry through the stoplight. The three other locations, top locations for crashes are right out here again at the light going into Wake Alon, along sixty-four, around the Rendell area, and then at the intersection in front of Walmart. So, you will see those locations be a priority for us in the coming year. To demonstrate the significance of traffic enforcement, all of our patrol officers work traffic enforcement. It's not something that's designated just to a specialized unit. I think you're familiar with that. You know that as part of our career development program, each officer has to be certified to run radar and perform other traffic-related duties. Being caught for speeding does not always mean that a driver gets a ticket. Our goal is to gain compliance with the speed laws and education and warnings sometimes do better than issuing a ticket. We do issue warnings in about forty percent of our traffic stops. The rapid growth impacts our ability to be proactive and as targeted as we would like to with traffic enforcement, so you will see some additional personnel requested in our upcoming budget. Switching over to community outreach, relationship building is a key component to our community-oriented policing approach. We really have stepped up our efforts at outreach in the last year. You can see going from two-hundred-and-forty-six hours to over eight-hundred. We have a goal of conducting at least an hour and a half of community engagement each day and we far surpassed that goal this year. Very thankful for our staff for trying to find ways that community engagement can be meaningful to them. Not every officer feels comfortable reading Dr. Seuss books on Dr. Seuss Day, so they really need to find something that is important to them. Community seems to appreciate our outreach and engagement efforts. We grew social media this year, that's the information that's in the top-left corner there, and have just over eleven thousand Facebook followers now. We do believe that social media is an avenue for us to tell our story to community versus them making their opinions about law enforcement based on what they're seeing in just traditional media. Another method of telling our own story is through our Citizens Police Academy, sure which all of you are very familiar with. That kicks off on January thirty-first and will run for about a month and a half. I have received interest from a couple of you, I appreciate that very much. Just a reminder that applications are due on Monday and we're hoping to have between fifteen and twenty people in the class. I want to give you just a few quick program updates. The Career Development Program took effect on July first. We have processed fourteen officers through that program and they've received raises, a little bit more than ninety-six thousand dollars' worth of raises for those fourteen people. We've also hired four officers in on that career development ladder. We were notified in September that we've been awarded the Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant, which will provide partial funding for the two traffic officers that you all already approved for our twenty-three budget. We've had, we have to backfill those positions and we've had the job openings posted for several months, but applications remain quite sparse. We've only hired one officer to backfill one of the positions. I think I've mentioned, but I'll say it again, that Officers Oliver and Manning have been selected to serve in the traffic unit. Officer Oliver transferred into that role, role full-time this week. Manning will transfer in as soon as we get his position filled. In an effort to create a more diverse and inclusive work culture, you will hear me asking for some incentives in the coming year. We're interested in incentivizing living in town, having a second language, serving as a field training officer, and being heavily involved in the recruitment process. So, if someone brings us a high-quality candidate who is successful in the field training process, then they would receive an incentive for that. Our flock cameras have not yet been installed. There continues to be a supply chain issue, but the bigger issue is getting authority from the DOT to install them along the right-of-way. We could quickly install them along local roads, but we have to get DOT approval to put them along ninety-seven or ninety-six and that's, that's the holdup at this point. I do think it's going to be something that the legislature looks at in the coming session, or my fingers are crossed for it anyway. But, the, the, the command staff right now is talking about where can we position them in town off of ninety-six or ninety-seven because we, we just don't want to continue to wait for that approval. We do have, we will have two additional flock cameras in the coming budget, so once that issue is resolved, we could put the, the next line of cameras out in those locations. Interestingly, and I'm really excited about it, Weaver's Pond have, has installed two flock cameras and given access to the Police Department to those, so we're already reaping the benefits of a license plate reader system without having them on our own dime. The last thing I want to give you in terms of a program update is an introduction to David Gregory, if you want to stand. David joined us on January ninth. He comes to us via Oregon and Georgia, has a thirty-year career in law enforcement. He and his wife moved to the Garner area last summer, right? During the summer? David has been hired as our police planner. He will serve as both the accreditation manager and evidence technician. I signed a contract with Calea, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, two weeks ago and was able to meet with state officials about the state accreditation program during a conference I was attending earlier in the week. And we will be one of the first agencies in the state to participate in an accreditation mentoring program where the State Department of Justice will pay a seasoned accreditation manager to mentor and help train David, which is neat that we get to be the first one to do it and also neat that you see this cooperation between agencies. It definitely is a great group of people who believe in accreditation being a business model for how you carry out police operations. So, I want to welcome David and say thank you for joining us. I'm excited to have him here. Welcome aboard.
Glad to be here. I've met some of you in passing, so hopefully I'll have another opportunity to get around and meet the rest of you face-to-face, but before I cut out, do you have any questions for me while I have the floor, other than, oh, welcome and I'm glad to be here?
Not yet. Hold your horse.
I'm eager to get to work and excited to be here, so I look forward to bumping into you again soon and talking a little bit more.
Thank you.
Good boy. Thank you.
Lastly, most of you were there when we promoted Jordan Perry to Sergeant earlier in the year. Additionally, we brought on five new officers who have between three and fifteen years of law enforcement experience. Most recently, we hired back Dustin Elliott. Dustin needed to check out the grass on the other side of the fence and after a couple of months, turned out he appreciated the fertilization that was going on here, so he came back. And that is all I have for y'all this evening. Happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Chief, we will go around the room and comments or questions, starting with Commissioner Baxter.
I don't think I have any.
Commissioner Miles?
Just a couple. Weaver's Pond flock cameras, I've seen those in Weaver's Pond, so.
I've seen those in Weaver's Pond, so we, they're not. I was, that's what I was going to ask. I saw the, see those in action.
Correct. So Weaver's Pond owns them, and they will pay the annual maintenance on them. But they give us access to them, along with, there's probably 20 law enforcement agencies in and around Zebulon that are operating Flock cameras right now, and those different agencies have given us access to their cameras. And ideally, once we have our own, we would make them available to other agencies as well.
I heard you also mention, like, diversifying the police. What kind of, can you elaborate on that a little bit more? You said incentives. What will be looking, what should we be looking for when you say incentives? Can you give me a little bit example of that?
So if we want to remain competitive and, and have people who are interested in coming to work for us, who have diversity in their backgrounds, then, then we have to step up our game to remain competitive. So some of the incentives that I'm interested in pursuing are related to living in town. There's certainly a benefit to having the officers who work here live here. Second languages, proficiency in ALS, Spanish, French, what have you. Serving as a field training officer. The officers who train our young officers coming in straight out of the police academy or with just a few years of experience from another organization put in a lot of extra time. But it takes a certain skill set to be able to teach younger people, and I'd like to incentivize that as well. Other departments in our area, not even in our area, it's standard, pretty standard practice in law enforcement to have incentives along those lines. And if I want to attract diversity in our candidate pool, then I need to be able to step that up as well.
So this would pretty much kind of like make sure, we're working on what we talked about some time back about the police force kind of emulating what's, looking like what's in the community. That would kind of address that issue, you think?
Ideally, ideally, you would want your police department to mirror your community.
Correct.
And that's, it's a constant effort. There, I know of very, very few agencies that have half of their staff that are women. It just isn't the case in law enforcement. 28% of the students in the police academies are minority. And so creating increased representation of minorities in the police department here in Zebulon is going to take work. I think the more that we can get out into community and get to know young men and women when they're younger and get them interested in a field of service will end up benefiting us. Hopefully, there's some, oh, I already know that there are some young folks who will be coming to our Citizens Academy, and maybe this is the first step in us being able to grow a more diverse work culture.
Last question. With us covering like the BLET or something like that, paying that cost, sometimes that is a hurdle for some people. Would that kind of like be a incentive?
Yeah. So, and that's something that's becoming very popular. When, when I got into law enforcement, and even for the first 15 years, it was only the large agencies that were able to do that. But I got an email from a Wake County chief today asking that same question. How many of you are hiring and sending them to the police academy? And it's something that Lisa and I have talked a good deal about. I have the authority to do that. If we have a highly qualified candidate, I would absolutely send them to the academy on payroll and let them, that be their first three months of work is going to school.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one, Chief. Those cameras, are there any other subdivisions that may be following that same process, or?
I've not heard of any development in, who has expressed interest in it right now. But I will share with you that as part of the technical review process, it is something that we recommend.
And just a comment. Hopefully with the new Wake Tech campus that's going to be specializing in law enforcement, that will help our population tremendously to, to get involved in law enforcement locally. So just a little, little side, side note. Commissioner Clark?
I don't have any at this time, but I appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you.
And I know we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Laues?
No questions, but ditto on the good work, and very happy to see you go after accreditation.
Thank you, Chief.
I actually have a question that
Commissioner Baxter?
will not be something that you can answer, but might be something that Mike Clark can answer in relationship to, is there a set of requirements that we can put in place that would require new development to install Flock cameras prior to breaking ground?
We're still researching the legality of that, having as a requirement. But at a minimum, later this spring, in April, there will be a joint public hearing, and part of that will be amendments to the utility allocation policy. And as a minimum, it will be included as incentives on that policy as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Chief?
Thank you.
Next, Board of Adjustments. Commissioner, I mean, Manager Moore?
I recognize Michael Clark, Planning Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. The first, or, well, the first of the items I have tonight is in regards to our Board of Adjustment. Our Board of Adjustment is originally created by North Carolina General Statute and then replicated in our Unified Development Ordinance. The purpose is really threefold. The first of the duties is as response to applicants coming in for appeals or what sometimes is called interpretation. These appeals are not something that would typically go before the board, such as a conditional rezoning, special use permit, plan development, or even the denial of a text amendment. All of those would be appealed to Superior Court. These appeals would be more along some lines of, we deny somebody a sign permit, zoning compliance permit, a residential housing permit citing a specific element of the Unified Development Ordinance, noting that it doesn't meet the setbacks or the height. Essentially, it's an opportunity for an applicant to go before a board to indicate, no, I disagree with the planning department, and here's the reasons why. The second is variances. This is what is typically more known for Board of Appeals, where there's a site-specific situation, such as a rock uppropping or some other practical difficulty that prevents an applicant from being able to meet the letter of the ordinance. A lot of times, these are dimensional requirements, such as setbacks or height variances that would have to be required. It's worth noting that these variances run with the land. So even if somebody comes in, gets a variance, makes those modifications, and then sell the house, they still continue to be in conformance, being that they received a variance. They do require that practical difficulty, and the burden of proof to show that practical difficulty is on the applicant. The last is something that's actually fairly new. When the new general statute came forward, it created an opportunity called reasonable accommodations. These situations are more based on the property owner, the occupant, that there's some sort of a difficulty in operations of the home. The most common application of this would be if a property owner or an occupant needed an accessibility ramp going into their house, either for a walker or a wheelchair or some other form of disability. These situations do not require them to show a practical difficulty, but they're also tied with the occupant as opposed to the running with the land. So if these were approved, which is a much lower bar to prove, if they're approved by the board, the Board of Appeals, there would be a stipulation on those that when the occupant moves out of the home, that those improvements would have to be removed. Right now, however, we do have a bit of an issue with our Board of Adjustment, namely, we do not have enough members to hold a quorum. And we've had this for quite some time, as you may recall. This isn't the first time that I've had discussions regarding the makeup of the board. Right now, we have, two members are in good standing, a member that has expired, and one of the two members of good standing is, there's questions if they're going to be able to continue on in the foreseeable future. We do have a clause in there that allows a member to continue to serve even after their term expires until their replacement is appointed. But it is at their discretion. If they choose not to continue to serve, we do not require that they, they do so. So right now, we've been having difficulties filling the board. This is a type of board that not a lot of people are interested in because of the legal nature of the board. It's typically somebody who has like a law background or a planning or development-type background, or even a managerial background, such as like a former assistant town manager, city manager. Those are typically the individuals that would fill these roles. And being that we still are a small community, we don't have that depth to sample from that a lot of other larger cities have. We also have difficulty maintaining the board. A lot of times, folks will come on and either they're not fully aware of the, the in-depth nature of this. Recently, one of, one of our newer planning board members was on the Board of Adjustment for a short period, and they were really not aware of the, the standards that had to be proven, the, the depth of legal understanding. And we're very surprised by, by the content of what they were expected to, to decide upon. The other part is, a lot of the folks that serve on any of our appointed boards, they have an inherent passion about being able to do something positive for the community. The Board of Adjustment, based on the new regulations, almost never meets. During my almost four years here, we've had three meetings where the board has had to decide a case. Having it where a board only meets less than one time per year not only creates difficulties in helping them stay current with the, what the regulations are, they also don't have that camaraderie or that understanding of operations amongst their group that is created by groups that meet much more frequently. Finally, they lose that passion because they're part of an organization that does not meet that frequently. Under the old zoning code, as Commissioner Laues can confirm, the board would meet much more frequently than it does with our Unified Development Ordinance. In the event that the board were to remain as a separate, independent board, there's training difficulties, namely, the amount of resources that would have to be applied to help maintain that board would require them to meet, without applications, much, much more frequency. We would be able, we would need to concentrate that training into a two- to three-hour session, a couple times a year, at a minimum, in order to do that. So there'd be additional costs to not only provide staff resources to training, but also to bring in outside entities, because the content would be so encompassing. Last would be the staff resources. The Board of Adjustment right now is scheduled to meet on the fourth Thursday of each month. That's kind of our standing calendar hold. In order to accommodate that, we would really need to have an additional staff member as part of the planning department, somebody that is mid- or upper-level career that understands the legalities of it, somebody who has their North Carolina zoning officials as well as certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners, being able to serve that board. Couple of questions that came up with, if the duties of the board were allocated to the planning board, is the conflict of interest, or not conflict of interest, but conflict in decision. During the one-on-ones that we had earlier this month, we provided a matrix that really showed that there is nothing that would go before the planning board that would end up going before the Board of Commissioners or Board of Appeals. The operations between those two entities is entirely separated, and so there would not be that conflict between the two organizations. The training opportunities would be much better served if the duties were assigned to the planning board, because instead of a couple concentrated training efforts a couple times a year, we'd be able to provide incremental training after each planning board meeting, starting out with the basics, the quasi-judicial one-on-one, ramping up into more complex cases. More so that training would be able to be adapted on an ongoing basis, based on the understanding of the, of that group. We'll be able to have much quicker response times in terms of understanding where they need additional assistance or where they're just inherently understanding the concepts necessary in order to move forward. The makeup of the board for the Board of Adjustment is currently five members with two alternates. One of those alternates and one of those regular members are also representing, are representing the ETJ. Right now, we have seven members on our planning board with two ETJ representatives. So the makeup is similar. So the next steps, we're planning on providing a text amendment for a joint public hearing in February that would allow for the planning board to make a recommendation as well as get public, public comment on this to determine, is this something that we need to proceed with? Ultimately, we do need to do something with the planning board or with the Board of Adjustment. We cannot continue to operate with a board that does not have enough for a quorum. This will give the opportunity for the planning board to make a recommendation and come back before you in March for decision. It would come in the form of a text amendment that essentially assigns the Board of Adjustment role to the planning board. I've already had conversations with the chairperson and the vice-chairperson of the planning board and explained the dynamics and how that operationally would work. And they're going to be interested to see what the rest of the planning board feels about it, but they seemed very confident that they're up to that challenge. One other change as part of the text amendment is instead of having five members with two alternates, we would bring that up to seven members. We'd still maintain the two ETJ representatives, but this changes the dynamics a little bit in that it allows for both ETJ members to be fully participating and voting in these cases when they, for the few times that they would come before the board. And with that, I am available if you have any questions.
Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Baxter.
Why would someone that lives outside town limits be voting on a matter that is inside-town limits?
Because there's two components. 160D notes that our Unified Development Ordinance regulations apply to everything within our corporate limits as well as the extraterritorial jurisdiction. This creates representation for those regulatory elements that those property owners are subjected to.
And why does this need to go to a joint public hearing?
Because it's a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, and in accordance to North Carolina General Statute, any text amendment needs a planning board recommendation before it goes to the Board of Commissioners for a decision.
So if the Board of Commissioners decided that they didn't want a text amendment, then we would not need to have a
You could vote to deny the text amendment in March.
Laues? Will you finish? Commissioner Miles?
Just, like I said, trying to completely understand. I have citizens now that are always asking, get on board. Have we been actively seeking people for the Board of Adjustment? Because I know, right now, I probably could get three people that are in-town limits that could jump on this board that are looking to get involved. And I've given a series, I know I've passed a couple of names along to a few people. So just, before we kind of dissolve it, I would love to kind of like actively seek somebody out. That's what I'm, no questions, but that's a statement.
Commissioner Clark?
What legal things could happen with us not having a Board of Adjustments?
There's statutory timelines on when applicant or applications need to be decided upon, and if we don't have a quorum necessary to hold a variance, the variance is approved by de facto.
That could lead to some issues, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, the one exception to that is, in North Carolina, they did away with the right of a use variance, so that's our only real protection. But in terms of dimensional variances, those type of things, as well as appeals, if there's not, if there's not avenue recourse based on our Unified Development Ordinance that we can act upon, we either need to change our Unified Development Ordinance to have those appeals go directly to Superior Court, and I'm not even sure if that would be in compliance with 160D. But the way we have it standing now, we don't have the capability to react to those applications within the prescribed times per state law.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harson? Commissioner Lux?
I believe we have one application for in-town for the Board of Adjustments, but we're lacking an applicant for ETJ, and then we are lacking training. I'm open to hearing what the Planning Board recommends, and we have the public hearing, but having served on that board for 29 years, I'm still a firm believer in it being a standalone board. I know it takes some babysitting, and it takes the right people for that board to function. And we've been, what, three years without the board fully?
I, a little over, it's close to three, yes, that's correct.
So, I'm open to hear the public hearing in February.
Miles?
At three years, how many cases have we had where the Board of Adjustment, I mean, brought before the Board of Adjustments, within that three years?
There was one case during the past three years, and in that particular situation, the applicant agreed to postpone the decision until allowed for full representation on the Board of Adjustment. The situation kind of corrected itself. It was a code enforcement violation that was brought before them, brought before the Board for appeals. However, the violation ended up getting worse, and the property owner realized that it needed to be corrected. So, they corrected it without continuing to pursue a result. But part of the reason that we've had so few cases over the past several years is our Unified Development Ordinance is really structured to create other legislative opportunities to address these, primarily in the form of conditional zoning requests and planned developments, as well as administrative deviations, where it grants staff specific guidelines on very minor, less than 10% dimensional modifications.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I just think, to my fellow commissioners, I think we just really, before we dissolve this thing, we really have an opportunity to kind of seek people out. I know, like I said, personally, I know citizens that are here now, that are seeking boards or whatever. This is a great opportunity. We get them on and train them, and kind of like, maybe, like I said, you said it has to be a specific type of person, but I think before we dissolve, we really actively seek out these citizens, because they're looking to get involved, and this is a great opportunity.
Harson?
Well, obviously, just, you know, thinking on what you're saying, Commissioner Miles, if it's a board that has only really needed to be used within the last three years one time, is that really the board that people that want to get involved in the community, a board that we really want to push them to? If they want involvement, then that might not be the board for them to get involved in, you get what I'm saying? And I'm not saying no, but I would, I would want to find something that people could really have a stake in, versus something that kind of is, no, no offense, but not really, you know?
But you've been...
Okay, sorry.
I look around at all the municipalities, they all have it, they all have that Board of Adjustments, for the most part, in our general area.
Right.
There again, for us just to dissolve it, it's kind of like, and when you say getting involved, it's a good way, a lot of guys coming, a lot of people coming in now, they don't know our former government. So, this is a way to kind of like get their feet wet, figuring out, they start interacting with our Planning Department, they start interacting with us. So, it's just a good way, yeah, it's maybe somebody that can give us four hours, five hours, I mean, he or she may can't be fully committed, but this is a way, okay, I'm part of Zebulon now, that includes us, that, you know what I'm saying, that they're bringing it together, so before I dissolve it, I just know citizens are saying they're looking ways to get involved.
That makes sense, thank you, okay.
And if I may to, just for clarification, the scope of what these individuals will be responsible to do, it's a much greater ask than typically folks who are not interested in really passionately making difference. Not many of them are like Commissioner Lux, where they have an ingrained passion into the betterment of this community, and they have a very comprehensive understanding of the legalities and land use regulations and those type of things. So, to find somebody that has that balance, where they don't have a lot of time, but they have a lot, really good in-depth understanding for a small town, that's a very difficult ask.
Commissioner Lux, if I may ask you, what were your insights on, you were part of that board, correct? You were part of the Board of Adjustments?
I worked for 29 years, and I think the chairman for like 27.
Okay.
And it doesn't meet frequently, so you have to be up to speed, you know, and we would try to attend other Board of Adjustments meetings. Nowadays, you can watch them on Zoom, just so people understood what we were doing, because there is huge liability. If you mess up, and it ends up being appealed, goes to Superior Court, it could cost the town hundreds of thousands, you know, maybe half a million dollars.
Right.
So, it's nothing to take lightly.
So, by transitioning this power to the Planning Board, then that liability is still there, that doesn't disappear. So, I mean, so either way, you're going to train one group or the other, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, trying to...
The UDO has helped tremendously, because things don't get to the Board of Adjustments as frequently as they did before.
Okay.
And if the planning director's doing a really good job, a lot of stuff gets resolved and never goes to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
But you do get those weird things, where you've got a pie-shaped lot, a rock-out cropping, something that's very unusual to the land that you have to deal with. And I think nowadays, isn't the application fee $500?
That sounds correct.
At one point in time, I think it was $50, so you could challenge for 50 bucks, $500 is a big check to write for some people, so they many times look and find another way.
Okay.
But we still have the responsibility, regardless if it goes to the Planning Board, it comes back to the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
That does not go away.
It's just kind of sounding we dumping another responsibility, more on the Planning Board, and we already said they're kind of stretched thin a little bit with the decisions, so I mean, just really something to take a look at.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I just had a couple. Have we explored the possibility of any members that are already on boards that may want to do dual duties, say like the Parks and Rec Advisory Board? If someone's on that board that may be interested in...
I explore the possibility with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. However, I do know that a couple of members of the Planning Board that I had inquired about previously, they, one was not in favor of it, because it would be an additional meeting and there's schedule limitations. Another one was on multiple, and felt very uncomfortable serving on both at the same time with those additional meeting responsibilities, namely, because the second one never met, where the Planning Board did.
And is there like an age requirement to be on these boards?
That's a wonderful question, I do not know.
I guess one of the reasons I was asking that is because if we got students that are in political science or pre-law, and they have a Zebulon address, is it possible for them to serve on a board like this?
I, I don't know, however, I typically, I've never seen a situation where there's been somebody who's been under the age of 18 that would serve on one of these boards. The town attorney might be able to speak to this a bit more, but also going back to what Commissioner Lux commented on, that these are some really big deal cases, and somebody who has a little bit of life experience, that might be a preferable option, but I'll defer to the attorney.
Yeah, I expect that the requirements to serve on the Board of Adjustment, or any sort of appointed board, would be set out in our statutes. I don't think there's anything that's specific for the Board of Adjustment, but let's assume for a minute that it needs to be somebody who is a voter. I don't know what, you know, what's that age on that, 18? So, so that's one criteria, so maybe 18 would be a criteria. I'm saying maybe, because I'm not sure. But the most important issue is, you're entrusting people on the Board of Adjustment to make a decision about something that's critical for the applicant's business or future, and that decision has to be made by someone with credibility. That doesn't mean that a young person isn't credible, isn't thoughtful, and can't make a decision, but in terms of the reception that that might get from the public, I think you'd have to be very careful about, about how that would work. And I assume that we would want them to be of voting age and registered to vote, and in Zebulon as a minimum. But there's a real good chance that there is no specific criteria for the Board of Adjustment.
I guess my thought process would be, if there is someone that's taking courses through Duke Law, Carolina Law, Camel Law, whatever, that's a resident that may be interested in this kind of work or background, is that a possibility for someone like that to be on a board? Just kind of throwing that out there.
Just to mention something from my own experience. I was a young law school graduate, living in Selma, North Carolina, and I was appointed to the Board of Adjustment by the mayor of Selma, North Carolina. I was wet behind the ears and didn't know much of anything, but it was a privilege and an honor to serve, so I'm not saying there aren't some people out there that fit that description.
Yeah, I just, I'm kind of like Commissioner Miles, like to explore all options possible before we get to a point where we want to just say dissolve the board altogether. Commissioner Lux?
Yeah, just a suggestion, maybe we do a little advertisement on Facebook, and have a evening where we meet with those people who are interested and explain the frequency, the liability, et cetera. So, if there are people interested, they can come forward. I've asked around and have identified a couple people, but the ones I identified ended up backing out, because of time commitments, et cetera. But I, let's advertise it, and just see if anyone shows up, and see what we have out there, because we need both in-town and ETJ, and a lot of people still don't understand ETJ, so you have to kind of explain that in the post.
I like that idea, it's good, I like that idea. Just where we actively seek, before we dissolve, have we, what measures have we taken to recruit before we just dissolve? That's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mike. Main Street Program, Commissioner, I mean, Manager Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I recognize Teresa Piner, our Downtown Associate Community Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, we would like to continue our discussion and on the Main Street Program, and how it has evolved since our introduction as a Downtown Associate Community. In September of last year, the North Carolina Main Street Representative, Chuck Hassel, he came to the board and made a presentation discussing the different organizational structures, public, private, public-private, or what we call the quasi or hybrid model. November 17th, Town Board chose to develop the North Carolina Main Street Program using the hybrid, which is the public-private model, and from there, we need to move forward to look at some of the elements of the program. Our next steps will be looking and selecting the nonprofit status, as well as, once that is selected, we will have to make an application to the North Carolina Secretary of State's office. The tax exempt categories, you have seen these in the past. The main ones that would deal or would be available for the Main Street Program are the 501(c)(3), (c)(4), and (c)(6). The (c)(3) is, the purpose is charitable, educational, downtown redevelopment, which hits us directly on. The 501(c)(4) is designed more for nonprofit civic leagues, organizations promoting social welfare. You'll see that the downtown, North Carolina Downtown Development Association is the 501(c)(4), promotion of some common business interest. A lot of times, you'll see actually downtown groups, downtown organizations, chambers of commerce is following in these areas. Under the comments there, under the 501(c)(3), we'll look at how it's organized and operated exclusively for one or more of the specific purposes, so we would have to define an area and how we want that to be used. 501(c)(4), you can serve recreational purposes as well, in addition to downtown. It does have, and serve a wider class of beneficiaries than the 501(c)(3). And then the (c)(6), most are devoted to improvements of multiple business conditions rather than individuals. So, again, you're looking at your downtown organizations that are your downtown redevelopments, those that are lobbying your chambers of commerce. Political activity, I think this is an important one, and 501(c)(3) cannot directly be a part of activities regarding legislation or political candidates. What I do like about this is that it does attempt to look at the whole, the broader good of an organization, and hopefully, we can keep as much as possible politics out of this, and those that are part of the organization are truly making the decisions that they feel is best, in our case, for a downtown. 501(c)(4), may be involved in lobbying but cannot support political candidates. And 501(c)(6), unlimited lobbying, efforts directed toward promoting business interest. The implementation that staff will be recommending would be of the 501(c)(3) designation. The reason for this, in this particular situation, are most foundations support grants to 501(c)(3) versus 501(c)(4) and (6). Private individuals can deduct contributions, though that is huge when you come to fundraising. There's more flexibility than being a governmental entity, and it is up for the town and the boards to make the decision on what nonprofit they would like to select. However, when we look at, there's 43 of the 48 jurisdictions have a 501(c)(3) that speaks rather loudly. And we'll also say that some of those jurisdictions also have other nonprofit statuses as well. So, you may have one that has a 501(c)(3) as well as (6), they're typically larger, they've been in place for a long period of time, and then they have something very specific that they want to do with that. The 501(c)(6), businesses can deduct a portion of the dues, and in this case, would be contributions. The other strengths are that you can conduct unlimited amount of lobbying, and that, I don't like the way that is really worded there. It should not be able, it's limited on what you can do there, it's mainly for merchants. And then, also can represent private partners more freely. The challenges that we have, organizational stability, if that is the only way that we are moving supportive through that process. And I have, again, I apologize, because I have switched up my wording here, but they are available for more grant opportunities, as well as business donations, some are deductible in the 501(c)(6), and then individual donations are actually deductible. The 501(c)(4), you can serve a wider range of beneficiaries than a (c)(6) and a (3), they're easy to obtain, can represent private partners more freely. Again, we have the North Carolina Downtown Development Again, we have the North Carolina Downtown Development Association. One of the things that they do is actually lobbying for Main Street. Main Street itself cannot lobby, and so they are active in that way. They also do consulting. Challenges are some of the same as the (c)(6)'s. Again, it's more difficult to get grants, there's no tax benefits for donations. The 501(c)(3), again, is what we are recommending in this situation. It is because most foundations, when you're looking at grant opportunities, can receive funding. Private individuals can deduct contributions. Nonprofits can offer creative alternatives for benefits, and there's more flexibility than a strictly governmental agency. Challenges, if it's the only source of funding, it can be challenging for organizational stability. What the positive is here is that the town has elected to go to a hybrid model, which will benefit this organization. Campaigns and lobbying are limited. Again, that is a positive, and can't make substantial income from unrelated activities. It has to be fairly specific. Again, when the town is working with nonprofit agencies, then I think that is, is a strength that it is supporting a broader base. Next steps, select a nonprofit designation for us to be able to move forward. Apply for tax exempt status for whatever nonprofit designation you choose. It will have to be sent to the Secretary of State's Office and to the IRS. We'll have to look at Articles of Incorporation. Articles incorporation are really, are kind of those documents that tell the outside world how you're established. Bylaws would have to be looked at as well, and they are more of how we do things and conduct business internally. Very important, in this case where we are, the town is, is to look at board selection. We were talking about, we were just talking about boards and being active. This is going to be a very active group, a very, hopefully diverse group, and it is going to be necessary for us to receive that designation to have a board selected. Board selections, there's a matrix that, and that Main Street uses to try to identify skills and talents. You want it to be broad, you want possibly somebody in finance, maybe somebody in real estate, somebody that has a background, you want local people in the businesses downtown. You may want some of the new people that we've talked about that are coming into these subdivisions so they'll know about our downtown. So you want a very broad mix. Follow the bylaws for appointments, align appointments to the physical year, and job descriptions for the board and the officers. They will need to be in place. We can work on those. It's more important that the board is selected. Also, we will want to look at a contract with the expectations. We want the board to understand just how much work they've got involved and what's gonna, how often we'll meet, so it's just to kind of let them know. Funding of program, establish a budget, that's going to be important. That is something that I've been working with, with the Planning Department on as we move forward, how that will come to be, as well as with your economic development person coming in. Evaluate financial resources, fundraising, you know, it's going to be something that we want to do. Grants, this will give us an opportunity to pursue those grants, particularly with the 501(c)(3) and MSD, so, and Municipal Service District. And so these are some of the major ways, in addition to town support, that the program would be funded. I understand that you've looked at MSDs in the past, they are authorized by the state of North Carolina. A service district is defined, is a defined area where additional property taxes levied. This is one of the very few instances where taxes can be changed or different amounts. It is very important, and the state takes the position that everyone pays the same tax rate. Through municipal service districts or bids, this is one of the areas that it can be changed because you are identifying a need. There's no minimum required to establish an MSD, however, the tax rate may not exceed $100, $1.50 per hundred valuation. Some of the examples that I wanted to show you here, when we look at the downtown periphery, this is the zoning designation. It's a large area, you'll see like $119 million. Giving you some examples just to kind of see what that would look like. If you're looking at a $1.00 per hundred valuation, you're looking at $11,000 to be raised. Example two, if you're looking at $0.10, that's $118,000, that's $119,000. Although it's a very large area, there are a lot of properties in here that you will see that are either underutilized or not developed at all. And again, these are for examples. If we're looking again at an MSD and the boundary you're talking, and this is the downtown core, this is your downtown core zoning designation, you're looking at approximately $14 million. Again, at $1.00, you're looking at $1,300 that would be raised. Example two, $0.10, $13,000 that could be raised. This is the Main Street Boundary Designation, that was accepted, the DAC was accepted into. I apologize, that blue from this distance is fairly light. It is very similar to your downtown core boundary. There are a few instances and a few changes, but it's very similar. Is also another example that could be considered, it's approximately $16 million, you're looking at a $1.00, $1,600. Example two would be $16,000 raised for the downtown. Looking forward, we would like to move forward and look at appointment of the Board of Directors. We think this is very important, and it has to be in place for us to move forward as a Main Street designation. Adopt a five-year strategic plan. As a part of the large group meeting that we had some time ago, a draft plan was put in place with those comments and follow-ups with individuals that were at the meeting. We would want to bring that back out, look at that five-year strategic plan, and adopt an implementation work plan. This is one of the things that I think that makes the big difference with the Main Street Program, because it keeps you responsible. You set out a plan, you follow that plan, and you have to make reports to the town as well as the state on an annual basis. Again, we'll be drafting the bylaws and Articles of Incorporation and, in order to be able to meet that NC Main Street designation by July of 2023. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. We're excited. We have a lot of people that have been interested in the program. The one we had with the community at large was the largest municipally-held meeting of anywhere in the state. So it was larger than any other town. Some of the state meetings had been larger, but we felt that we had a lot of people that wanted to be involved. We've got a lot of people that are excited, and I think we're ready to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Harrison?
Are there any requirements that have been put in place for the appointments for the Board of Directors for this?
No, there are not specific, there are guidelines. And I think that would be something that the board will want to consider, Town Board will want to consider how that is put in place. But there, we have guidelines to follow, and those that have expressed interest, that have tried to, been a part of it through the process, but there are not, no guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
Nothing this time.
Commissioner Miles?
Just the boundaries, I was looking at the boundaries, so Compared Foods wouldn't be in that, wouldn't be in that?
Yeah, just, how were the boundaries determined?
Well, let's see, and if you selected the downtown, as an example, the downtown zoning designation with the downtown core, it would be part of that. For the purposes, and again, I apologize for the line being so thin, but the Main Street Program did not include that when it was put in place or when they brought us into the DAC program at the time. The, where Compared Foods is now, it was empty, it had been a drugstore, as well as Walgreens across the street was, you know, not fitting in with what they were wanting to focus on the downtown core. So it is not in the boundary of the Main Street Program, but certainly could be in a boundary that you selected as part of the nonprofit designation.
So is that a way of changing that boundary, or we're pretty much stuck with what we've been given?
This would be any boundary that you selected. These are examples.
But for the Main Street Program, the boundary is the one that is in, within the blue?
It, it is the one that is in, that is in blue. But an MSD is, is separate, it doesn't, you do not have to have an MSD to be in the Main Street Program, so you are able to make, change those boundaries. And that's the reason we wanted to show you the periphery zoning designation, the downtown core zoning designation, and it could not, and it could be different from those. It could be something else that you decided.
So it would benefit Compared Foods to be in that, that sounds like?
I, I, yes, I would, I would certainly think so, yes, sir.
And then the downtown core compared to the Main Street boundary has more of the Whitley property included on it?
More than Whitley property, it goes a little further on Vance Street as well. It's, it's very, very close. They're very similar, but it does not have to, the line for an MSD does not have to follow any of these examples that we put before you. It is your decision of what you would want that boundary to be.
There is a lot of interest in this, and I think this could really be beneficial to us. In a public-private organization, do you have any type of a feel of the percentage split of funding? I know this is going to be based upon goals, and then maybe even a ballpark budget?
We can certainly bring you back a ballpark budget. That is not a problem based upon how we have been operating. We'll say that in the beginning, it will, it is typically, funding is typically that from the government, the local agency, because it has to develop those other funding sources, those grant sources, and get those rolling. But I would say in the beginning, and I'm, and that may be the first year or two, it's going to be primarily that from the governmental agency. We do hope that it will be something that will be balancing out, and I've seen them, you know, kind of fall around to that, that 40/60 mark, but every jurisdiction is different. One example that someone gave me was New Bern. They have a, an Azalea event and sale, and I think it funds almost the whole program for the whole year. And that is a very unique situation. So I think it's going to depend on the town, and then as we sit together that work plan, what we seek. And I think that's going to make a big difference in, in our funding sources and where our focus is going to be.
I'd like to see a budget.
Commissioner Baxter?
Developed so that we can have an understanding of what's coming out of each individual resident's pocket towards funding this program, because ultimately, this is going to, you know, even though it is a small portion of our community, every single person, every resident of Zebulon is going to be paying for it. So I'd like to have an understanding of what that means for the average citizen as far as their tax rate goes.
Okay, and a very good point. I think knowing what the program costs are, as well as understanding the MSD, I did just, I picked a building that was 100 and, almost about $140,000 downtown, so of course, that's like $140 a year for the MSD. Then if you're looking at something that's a $500,000, I mean, $500,000, $5 million, I'll get it right in a minute, you're looking at about $500. So for those that are actually in the MSD, but you are correct, the program has a cost to the taxpayers as a whole. And one of the reasons that, that this is such a good program is it doesn't matter how much money a community has. If we don't know how to spill, just say if Zebulon had all the money in the world and we wanted to put together and focus on that downtown, we would make a lot of missteps along the way because we haven't done this before. What the advantage of this program is, is we have resources from the communities across the state, as well as the state itself helping us to make those decisions before maybe we get too far down the road and make a large expensive error.
So I would like to see what, what the cost of funding the program is, and please include in that whatever the membership fees are to the Main Street Program, et cetera, the Main, the Downtown Associate Coordinator salary, all of that, so that we have an idea of what this program in its entirety is going to run.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Before we go into special events, five-minute break, recess.
Thank you.
...space itself. We, as a profession, have started using alternative resources to help us lock down an event location. So you saw the use of Public Works vehicles at intersections. It helps to have the blue lights flashing where you're trying to block off the event location, but having the weight of the trucks behind the blue lights is very useful. So the ability for us to kind of lock down that area and provide a secure space so vehicles couldn't get through was easy to manage with the space that we had there at Candy Cane Lane. I talked to you in the monthly meetings about the detour route and having a little bit of concern with shutting down any DOT roadway for an extended period of time. The detour route was very minimal, just going around, you know, a block or two out of the way. Certainly something that's very manageable for people. I think we did a good job in the advertising of the detour route. The signage was out there for more than two weeks before the event, so there was plenty of notification. Another thing that we consider is lighting at night, and Sheila has spoke to that. I think we made some recommendations about lighting, but with the limited parking downtown, you know that you're going to have folks parking in residential areas around there and naturally crossing the street in residential areas where traffic has picked up because of the event, and that's something we need to pay particular attention to, I believe, the lighting associated with that, but also the enforcement of those areas. When we have extra folks coming into our downtown area, we need to make sure that we have enough staff to be monitoring those locations. And the last thing that we wanted to be sure that we were paying attention to was alcohol use during the event, ensuring that folks were not bringing it in when they shouldn't be, taking it out when they shouldn't be, or there was no abuse of alcohol, and we did not have any issues or concerns brought to us during the event itself or after. And in retrospect, I think for us, it was a win-win. It was a good event. We didn't have any significant incidents, and we felt like it was safe for the folks who came there.
I'll just add just a couple of items from the fire EMS side of it. So whenever there's an event that occurs, one of our main concerns is not only protecting the event. That is obviously a big concern, but the other concern is to continue providing service to all of those who are external to the event. In other words, we can't take all of our available resources and really just centralize them only event that occurs. So to give you a flavor for what that looks like, protecting both those involved in the event and those outside the event, for Candy Cane Lane, we took our on-duty crew and moved them from the fire station location to here at the municipal complex. That gets them responding so that when calls happen, they aren't trying to get out of the downtown, very congested area. We've removed them from that congestion, if you will. We found that to be very effective in managing that, and for most people, we were able to handle calls, and nobody at the event even knew those calls were occurring. The second thing that we also do is, on events of this scale, we put units that are nearer, for example, into UTV or something like that, where they can work through the crowd. An example with Candy Cane Lane, we did have a medical incident during the event. We were able to work through the crowd, and part of dealing with a medical incident like that is getting the animals crewed in and out. And with police departments' assistance, we were able to do that very seamlessly because we had staff that were dedicated to the event, and we didn't have to worry about trying to get them back in service. So I just wanted to take just a second just to point out that, that how we balancing that, the event as well as business as usual, if you will, sometimes gets a little more challenging, but that's where you see the emphasis of the manpower involved in handling events such as this.
Also, I wanted to share some information with you about the Christmas parade. So the Christmas parade was planned and implemented by the Chamber of Commerce, and the board authorized this event to move forward and to also cover the costs incurred from the town to support this parade. The goals, to our understanding, of the Chamber's parade, just based on conversation with the Chamber, is that they wanted to bring community together, bring awareness and customers to downtown, as well as give locals a chance to highlight their talents. They staged at Zebulon Community Park. The route was from Arrendal to Gannon, and they unloaded at MZ Chevrolet. Parades, we've spoken about this, but parades are very high-risk events. They're some of the most high-risk events that communities do. A few weeks, really a couple of weeks before our event was scheduled to move forward, there was an unfortunate accident in Raleigh. And so that's really reshaping how communities move forward with safety protocols for parades. And so at, you know, that last minute, when you're already working through event logistics, we worked with the Chamber to really take hold of maybe some safety changes that needed to happen, based on communication of what had happened with Raleigh, what we were hearing from others within our industries. I know Chief Boykin spoke a lot with some of her police colleagues. We were coordinating with some of our colleagues in Parks and Rec, calling around some of our neighbors to find out, okay, how are you making changes? Are you making adjustments? What's going on? And so there were a lot of adjustments that were made. The Chamber had to put out a new set of rules and expectations, and so that was a pretty tall task in a short period of time. And I do commend the Chamber for still being able to pull that together and offer an event. Unfortunately, it rained through almost all of the setup, and so that did impact parade entry attendance. And I think it also impacted crowds that would have come and enjoyed the parade. There was a lot of logistical support from the town, more than we had initially anticipated and more than we typically have to provide for private events. I think that just comes largely from how challenging parades can be, specifically in our road network. We did hear some concerns from downtown businesses about having back-to-back Saturday closures. So the Christmas parade previously had been done on Sunday, it got moved to Saturday, and Candy Cane Lane had also been on Saturday, and so they were very close together in the holiday season. So we did hear some concern from that. It wasn't necessarily like an overwhelming, we should never have this again, but it was just, you know, make sure y'all are aware of how often this is happening on Arrendal Avenue in our downtown. The Christmas parade, so the total staff hour investment was 494 hours. So this is the amount of hours that it still required town staff to support this private event. And I think the biggest picture here is really capacity of staff and number of staff that it takes at one time, and it's really hard to find a chart that shows that at one time. But I think Chief Boykin does a good job of telling the story of what that looks like. I will say that, like, for example, Public Works, they've always had a heavy participation in any parade activity because they have to close down the streets. But because of what happened in Raleigh during the parade hours, their staff had to take a little bit more of an active role in monitoring and coordinating with the police department throughout the street closure to just be additional eyes to keep the community safe and the parade entries safe as well. And so I'm going to give the chair back to Chief Boykin.
Thank you. So the parade is a much larger event space. When you consider every alleyway, driveway, business entrance that runs along Arrendal and Gannon, having the resources available to lock that down and create a safe space for the event is a lot more difficult. We had 32 officers who were there, every bit of my staff to include volunteers who have worked with us in the past or who work part-time with us, with the exception of the three who were working the street and taking regular calls for service, and the three who were working night shift. All of my staff was there, and an additional 10 officers from outside of Zebulon. And I think it's important to share that finding mutual aid during the holiday season can be a little bit difficult. Typically, we prefer to have mutual aid from agencies nearby because they operate on our regular communication systems, and we weren't able to get enough support locally, so we went into Nash County and had some folks here from Nashville. And it's just an extra step of having to provide equipment to them because their equipment wouldn't operate with what we were using. So it's definitely just something to consider. Even with 32 officers, we had some incidents of vehicles entering the parade route and have learned since then that that may have been on our own accord. Needless to say, that sort of thing does not need to happen during any kind of event where you've got pedestrians and vehicles in the same space. When you do combine those two things, there's certainly a lot of extra safety measures that go into effect, and we shared during our monthly meetings that those security measures were really beefed up by the Chamber. And I think, I'll echo what Sheila said, they did a good job of finding out what best practice was and getting it implemented really fast. But we went from having less than a dozen rules for parade entries to almost 50, so a lot of measures in place to try to mitigate any dangers that could have happened. I mentioned that shutting down Highway 96 during Candy Cane Lane for an extended period of time gives me a little bit of angst. I don't like the idea of shutting down any of the main roads in town, particularly when we don't have a lot of other options. With the road closure for the Christmas parade, shutting down Arrendal and Gannon at the same time really, I think, puts a strain on people who live or work in that area. The detour route is extensive. You have to go well outside of the one or two blocks that we did for Candy Cane Lane, and heard some feedback from community about that being an inconvenience to them. But again, I think we advertised well ahead of time, and I'm sometimes surprised that it was a shock to people that that was happening. It's kind of like, how'd you not know we were having the parade? But it happens nonetheless. The, let's see, manpower as it relates to our ability to maintain public safety, I express this in our meetings, and I'll say again, I have concern with any kind of event that shuts down a segment of town in that southwest corner of Zebulon was kind of cut off from the rest of town unless you really kind of went out of your way to get there. So we staffed that area with one person, but if there was a fire EMS call, there would have been a delayed response. If one of our officers got dispatched to a call and needed assistance, his backup would have been longer in responding than traditional. And so that's an area of concern for me. I don't like the idea of putting our officers in any kind of position that it increases the likelihood of them being in any kind of position to have to use force because they didn't have the support that they needed there. So I already mentioned the mutual aid. Any other things that you have?
I just want to take a second to echo Chief Boykin's impact of these main arteries being closed. And to give you an idea of how we addressed it, you know, unfortunately, a lot of fire events are not single-response events for us. It takes multiple units, obviously from a devastating house fire or many other events. A single unit is not enough, but so that amplifies it when our major arteries are shut down. But for events such as this, where I told you we relocated trucks outside of the downtown area for the Candy Cane Lane, now we've got an event that shuts down two major highways. So we had four different crews operating around town. We split crews up, and we sent them in all different parts of town for a couple of reasons. One, we got them outside of the parade restrictions, if you will, but we enabled them to get there just absolutely as quick as they can to make a difference, and then they could work to serve each other in backup roles. So a lot goes on, and I know that's what Chief Boykin is telling you. I just want to echo the same thing. When you have an event of this magnitude where it shuts down so many roads, we do a lot over and beyond just to make sure that things are covered in those areas, and Chief Boykin is exactly right. Our area of biggest concern was that corner that was kind of tucked inside the parade. We had all of our trucks distributed, but it was still going to be tough to get into that internal core inside the parade. We had some provisions for that, but it just, it can't be what it needed to be when a event such as this magnitude, so that's it.
I'll just real quickly point out, I think what Joe was referring to, when we have an event of this magnitude where everybody has to come into work, that adds to those times that we're working at minimum staffing. And clearly, we're trying to kind of dig ourselves out of a position where there's only two people on the street. But this is certainly one of those positions where everybody I had needed to be at that event if there were any sort of regular emergency. If we had, not a bank grab, well, Saturday mornings, if we had any kind of critical event to occur, we would have had to peel people from the parade, and we would have had to shut the parade down because we had nobody else to go to with all of our staff there.
Were there any questions in regards to either of these events before we go to some policy follow-up?
Comments from any of the board members? Commissioner Baxter?
Between pages 47 and 48, I'm having a little difficulty understanding the total police staff hours, because on page 47, it looks like it's somewhere around 325 staff hours, but then on page 48, it looks like it's 175 staff hours.
Yeah, it's, I swear there's like a ghost in the shared drive, but Chief Boykin and I, on her travels today, we were communicating and updating in between meetings, and there was a typo that we had fixed, but then it's fixed in the PowerPoint, but somehow it didn't translate over to the printout. So it is, it was 174 was the number of hours. And so we apologize for that one piece in that chart on page 47 being off on your printout.
And does that include the outside agencies that assisted us?
Yeah, in total man-hours from planning through cleanup and everybody who was there.
Okay. Thank you.
This is for, mostly for Chief and Chris. Just trying to understand that you guys are like, the main artery closing down, what other options do we have in you guys' professional opinion?
I personally don't think that there are great options in Zebulon. The way that the town is laid out and the fact that both 96 and 97 DOT-maintained roadways are major arteries through town, we're in a difficult position. I think our town is outgrowing the initial layout. When the Chamber first came to us, there were four of us sitting in our training room for two hours trying to define other parade routes that we thought might work, and we didn't come up with any great solutions.
Chris, one question for you. For as backup, I mean, you talked about where we were kind of stressed in the fire department. Was Hopkins in the play anyway? Did we communicate with those guys saying, okay, we have this going on X amount of this day? Do we reach out to those guys and let them know what we have going on?
We absolutely do. Yeah, we typically reach out to both Hopkins and Wendell. Sometimes, depending on the event, Hopkins will reload a Cacada truck somewhere, Tarran Meadows, Green Pace Road, Riley Hill Road. Sometimes they'll move a truck there, based on what events. And Wendell sometimes will put one lizard leg. It just depends on the event, what's going on, but we absolutely reach out to them, and we all kind of readjust a little bit to make sure everything's covered.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
Is there any way to maybe make it smaller and find a different route? I mean, I know times have changed. I mean, when I was young and we had the parade, it wasn't like that. We set up over here in the neighborhoods and just came down Arrendal and went to Barbie Street. So...
That was one of the things that we were concerned with as we were discussing the Christmas parade, was the size of it. When we did the Juneteenth parade in the downtown area, that was very manageable in that space because the parade was smaller. But based on history and what we thought we would see in terms of participation for the Christmas parade, there were no options that would allow the front end of the parade to be out of the way before the back end of the parade was catching up.
I mean, we even played with the option of, like, could you set it up or have, like, load in on that Barbie Street, Vance Street area where they came down, like Wakefield Street towards Town Hall and unloaded here. But the problem that you then start, you still have to cross Gannon, but even there, now you have all of those driveways that you, for every home and every driveway, you know, that could be two to three cars that you have to try to limit. And it's going to be a challenge. There are much smaller communities, very small communities that will do parades in neighborhoods like that. But there are so, the challenge we have is that we know that that's not the proper way, and it's not safe for the community. And so then how do you, what mitigation efforts are you going to take to be able to limit people trying to leave their homes in the middle of your parade?
Commissioner Harrison?
Don't everyone jump on me. I'm just going to ask a question. Would it be like a complete nightmare to have the Christmas parade in Candy Cane Lane on the same day, as to not close down, you know, the businesses for two Saturdays? It might, you know, kind of limit time? I don't know, just a thought.
We actually explored that option. It's a capacity thing. We just don't have the capacity to do both. And that's honestly, like, the same issue we ran into when we looked at trying to do the Juneteenth that way, because they wanted to do a parade and an event downtown that wasn't even on Arrendal, but it was on Horton. And what we really heard from mostly police, and I'll let you share that, is that they just didn't have the capacity to support two major events like that at one time.
And moving from shutting down Gannon and then opening Gannon to keep Arrendal shut down, the logistics of that and putting up a stage, it's a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lox?
No other comments. You made some valid points.
Commissioner Baxter?
I have a question, not for you, but just for the, going back a little bit. If we were to purchase a stage and a tent, where is it going to be housed and stored when it's not in use?
So that's something we collaborated with Public Works on, and so what we feel would be in our best interest in what you'll see in the request is that we purchase a trailer, like an enclosed trailer for it to say, stored in, so that you're limiting how many times you have to take it in and out of somewhere and increase your damage opportunities, and that when it's ready to be taken to an event, everything is there, nice, neat, stored, it has a place, and you don't have to worry about you've lost this piece or you've lost that piece because you only needed two pieces of stage this time versus next time. So just you keep everything together and solidified. It's very similar to what, Public Works has something similar with electrical support items, so there's a trailer specific to that for when we do events and other types of things. So we feel that that would be the best route, would be to have a trailer that will store just that.
Thank you.
One concern for me, I heard the chief saying we're stretching kind of thin with police officers. Would, like, a security company pretty much do that timeframe, at least doing the route, certain aspects of the route assist with that if we were to kind of solicit that, taking that avenue? Were they just kind of standing, I mean, along the route?
Are you asking if we could hire?
Like a potential solution, assist in that timeframe?
Yeah, so there are security companies who are trained with parking and traffic direction. I think that could absolutely be a resource for us to tap into, or whoever is bringing the parade forward.
I mean, I'll just speak for me. I just personally can't see, I mean, I know it's stretching staff thin, but just to mocks next to the parade, I mean, the citizens, that's one thing I know a lot of citizens look forward to. So we do have to find a solution for whatever the issues are, but I mean, just to get rid of it, I can't see that. That's just me.
And maybe...
I mean, I said this.
Harrison?
I was going to say, and maybe that's something that we look at when they come before us for a parade. Maybe we look at, work with the police to hire a separate or a security company to help, because it is such a strain if that's something they want to have. So I think that's a good, something good to look at, as far as, yeah, I don't want to cancel it, or, anyway. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
When it gets time for the parade, and the people that are in it or what is in it, is there a way to make it smaller? Are there things in there that, you know, I'm always in the front, I don't even know what's in back there. We're up in front. But, you know, maybe it doesn't need to be as big as it is, you know. I don't know. There may be some way to work that out.
Yeah, I think when we first started meeting with John, we talked about the number of entries, and a smaller parade, a shorter parade, fewer entries would be able to fit in a space like we used for Juneteenth. I don't know what that number is. How many total entries did we have this year?
Seventy-five.
There were 57 entries on the list that we gave, but of those, you know, like a car club would have had, I think there was 20, 15 to 20 in one of those entries.
So we'd have to kind of...
That might be able to be minimized, you know.
Well, and I think that's a great point. And like, to the question Commissioner Harrison asked, like, could you have the parade and this on both days? And while I don't know that we could have the parade and Candy Cane Lane just with our layout of downtown at the same time, there may be components of what was in the parade that could be represented at Candy Cane Lane. So I'll give the example, like, the Corvette Club. They really enjoy coming together as a community, and they are very proud of their vehicles, and they do a lot of great community work typically. Perhaps incorporating a car show into something like Candy Cane Lane, which is very common in these events, maybe working with the Chamber to incorporate some components that may be part of a parade into Candy Cane Lane to be able to make the parade more manageable in a different route, might be something that we should explore.
Any other questions, comments? Any other questions, comments?
Certainly. Limiting the number, like the car club, you know, had to participate. And I do like the idea of having a car show because that gives them the opportunity to talk about their cars, to raise the hoods. People love to walk around and do that. It would give us a more rich experience to have that, I think, at Candy Cane Lane and remove that from the parade. And then is there a way, like, what would it look like or feel like if we didn't make that hook on to Gannon? If we just did a straight shot from Arrendal, like from, we lined up at the municipal center or something like that and just did a straight shot down so that we weren't getting into those areas that have a bunch of potential like turns into the parade route?
The traffic right here in front of the municipal, municipal building and coming off of sixty-four, that, that's the concern for us there. And having to route them, they would, you'd have to put everybody that way. So we're not gonna send them through the parking lot at Belk and we can't turn them on Judd because we, we would be coming out there. The parade would be using that space. I don't know that, I don't know that we'd get approval for the, to shut.
Well, that would, that would take, that would work. I'm just trying to think.
Any other comments, questions?
I just think we have our work cut out for us, figure it out. I know there's issues, but I just say just to automatically there again, just get rid of it. I can't see that because I know a lot of citizens look forward to it. I believe there's a solution, but it's gonna take us working together to figure it out. But just to get rid of it, I can't see that. Simplify it, but then what you, what you do, okay, if you were to target, say, the Corvette Club, now you could potentially look at objectively to say, okay, why are you seeing us out? Now you're setting us to the side.
Well, I mean, yeah, but most people have one unit.
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm saying the appearance of that. I'm not saying we are, but we just have to walk a thin line.
I think it would be easy for us to say, one entry is one vehicle. Or like limit the vehicle. Or, or one, you know, like, or one team instead of like saying one entry can be up to twenty vehicles. Because that to me never made sense.
Commissioner Harrison.
I think that it's a good, it's, we're in a good place that where we can make some adjustments to the rules and regulations of any type of parade that we may be having. The, the, the parade path for the Juneteenth parade, I think, was great. It didn't shut down a lot. So I think that it's just gonna take us a moment to just be strategic about the, the new rules and the way we want things to go because it's something that our community cherishes. It's something that our community is used to. And so in the essence of our citizens and making sure that we continue on with the things that we know that our community loves, we just need to make some adjustments so that it works for everyone and it's not as straining on the departments that it has been. So I, I look forward to hearing some, just some new visions, some fresh ideas as it relates to parades.
Commissioner Laux.
Nothing.
Commissioner Miles.
One last question. Is there a reason why we don't move it back to Sunday instead of Saturday? Is there a reason for that?
I mean, that was the chamber's request. The, the. Chamber recommended to move it to Saturday. And I think that that's something that the board would have to take into consideration. Like as that request comes in and if you would like us to have a conversation with them to say, hey, I know you moved it to here, but we're hearing from the board, there's an interest to move it back to Sunday just because of some of the impacts. To just give them that, that information, we can certainly do that. And then ultimately, when it comes back for the board, when it does, like our goal tonight and as it was previously, was just to provide you with information so that when it's time for you to make decisions, but also to take in information. I had a couple of questions for you, but I want to make sure I've answered your question before I go.
One of my concerns is the timeframe from like Candy Cane Lane and the Christmas parade. That, that seems like a heavy lift to have them that close together. Seems like it needs to be stretched out a little bit more as far as when the events are held. Just something probably can coordinate with the chamber to try to schedule things so it won't be so much of a strain on the department's staff.
Yeah, and we'll definitely share that also with the chamber. I know some of the challenges that you run into with parades is trying to get bands, trying to get professional floats. A lot of people that participate in Christmas parades, they like go on a Christmas parade tour and they're gonna do all in the general area. And so the, a lot of these communities are using the same companies for the professional floats. And I'll give you the example, we had challenges with, on Saturday of the parade with lineup because some of the professional floats who should have been there first, because they're so much bigger and harder to move around, they actually came almost at the very end because they were doing another parade earlier in the day. So trying to schedule that around. And so we'll definitely share that with them. That probably would just be a challenge that the chamber navigates.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I had a couple of questions. So y'all engaged in a wonderful conversation about parades and it's given me some ideas. But I wanted to, in follow-up to the event policy discussion, when I read through some of the comments and I was listening to some of the things going on, one thing that stood out to me is that there was a question about, like, we had some specific parameters for like road races, but we didn't necessarily have that type of parameter for parades or limitations on parades. And so I wanted to pitch a couple of questions to the board and get your feedback, mostly to just understand, do you want staff to bring forward additional standards to add to your event policy specific to parades and kind of what you want them to look like? And so to lead that, I think I know, just based on hearing some of your conversation, but as we pull that together, do you have a concern with a parade that shuts down Gannon and Arrendal at the same time? She's first.
I mean, I think anything that we can do to lessen the stress and the, the strain on the town, we would like to see anything that can, you know, help us to help our police, our safety. I mean, anything that can be beneficial to the town, we definitely want to see. And if the strain closing down both of those roads at the same time, if that is an issue, then we need to see something, whether we do it or not, a solution in front of us would be great.
Commissioner Clark.
That's what I was thinking the same thoughts.
Commissioner Laux.
Thinking the problem is we haven't closed too long. So maybe in the policy, we come up with a time requirement that it can be closed and not exceed.
Commissioner Baxter.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Laux that setting forth some more stringent time parameters is a good idea just so that, I mean, I think that in this case, because it was the first one that had been done in a while, that the chamber absolutely needed that extra time this time. But I think that if we have a better set of expectations out there for what we are going to allow for our parades and what we need them to look like, that will kind of shape the shortening of the time that we actually have to keep everything closed, closed down. So, yeah, I agree.
Miles. Next question.
Are there other concerns? So we kind of answered some of my questions in the previous one, so I'm trying to wrap it back around. Other than like time requirements, trying to navigate alternatives to the Gannon and Arrendal, but are there other concerns that are related to parades that when we bring forward, if you want us to, standards and expectations to look at? Is there something you want us to take a look at?
Baxter.
We're gonna have to get back to you on that. We're gonna have to think about it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Miles.
I'll go back to the time thing. I mean, I've seen a lot of things planned out, events planned out, something like that. I don't know how you would even enforce the timeframe. I mean, it's kind of like going back to combat. It looked good on paperwork, but once the first round goes down range, it's gonna change. So once that first car comes down there, you know, it's okay, you're gonna, I mean, the object is to keep it moving. Every parade I've been in, keep it moving, keep it moving. But there's no way you can say, okay, two hours and fifty-nine minutes and thirty seconds, you need to be done. I mean, I don't know how you would enforce that. I mean, literally, you're gonna stop this car and say, okay, oh, you missed.
I don't think it's that much as like you, you getting like, you know, four hours to set up.
Speak into the mic, into the mic. Thank you.
Wow, that hardly ever happens that you guys can't hear me. I'm not used to that. I, what I was envisioning was more of like a shortening of the setup time and the breakdown time, not necessarily, I mean, I think that we can definitely get a better handle on how long we think it's going to take if we're allowing, say, twenty floats and each float is, you know, one vehicle traveling at this rate, we might be able to come up with a ballpark. But certainly, you know, I don't even remember, was it shut down for six hours or?
No, not, not for the parade. And I don't know the length of the, the closure. Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, was it an hour for the parade to, once it started to get to the other end?
It was shut down for about two hours altogether.
Two hours altogether, okay.
Ideally, we want to close it down thirty minutes before, so we create that safe space and then took the parade an hour and a half and clean up.
Yeah, I thought that it took longer just because of the setup.
Setup was very long. For this, it was also their first time doing it, but I mean, they started setup before ten o'clock. As far, there were floats that were arriving as early as ten o'clock.
Right.
And so that's a long time. There are other ways, and that's where like Community Park might not be the best place to be staging.
Right.
And not to say we're not open to it, but there are other ways that you can manage how a parade flows that might would impact how much time it takes to set up and stage it, but also the flow of an, of an event. A lot of times what starts to delay an event and create those large gaps are groups that are performing. And if there's not someone from the event organization staged throughout the event that's saying, okay, you can't stop every twenty feet. You gotta keep going. If you stop, you can only stop this long, but then you've got to walk faster. So like an event pacer, that helps. Or having designated locations where if you're going to perform, you perform here, you have forty-five seconds, but then you have to catch up to the ones in front of you. So there are ways to manage how that time works that other parades have found successful.
And keeping that in mind is an excellent one.
Commissioner Baxter. Commissioner Miles.
We're kind of thinking on the, the ram of Macy Day's parade, where they get in there, do their performance in a short spot, hit it, keep moving, hit it, keep moving, that thing.
Yeah, so that was something we had recommended. When we recommended a shorter, adjusted route to the chamber, we recommended that, I mean, we recognize it's hard for a community with such a big change, right? So if they're used to having this bigger parade that went down Arrendal and Gannon, that you may have to do something different that kind of makes it feel fun and, and new. And so that was one of our recommendations was have, okay, you have candy drop spots or these are your performance locations and you really dress it up, you make a big deal about it. You really get the community behind celebrating these locations and the kids start to amass around these locations. And so we, we would re-initiate, like, we really think that, especially with a smaller route, that creating that vibe in that environment would really have a positive impact.
Because most places, most parades have like a parade, well, not parade deck, where most people sit, I mean, like your dictators or whatever, and certain citizens or whatever sit and they perform there and then kind of move along. So I can see what you're saying. Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of noticed some of the parades in the past, wherever they're set up, to stop and say, introduce, here's Commissioner Laux and, and talk about him or whatever for a few minutes. I think, what was it, Honey Beth was doing that, but it was like, you didn't have time to even stop there to, to, to even get a photo, unless to talk about, or wave to the people. So I think those are, those are some, some logistics that can be worked out. I know in the past, that used to be where, where she was set up right across from the Christmas tree. Stop, here's Commissioner Baxter and she's dissing that and waving. Your two minutes is up, go, you know? And then, but this time it was like, just kept rolling. So it's just something to think about.
Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Harrison. Commissioner Laux.
One thing I'd like to see added is when we have a thousand people in town, I would like to keep those people in town. And I'm guessing like at the end of the parade, I would love to have there be high school bands, play Christmas music, food trucks, vendors. So there's a parade, but after the parade, there's something to do. And we kind of congregate people in one area. The car show, I think, was brought up. That kind of triggered my thought, you know? The Corvette guys want to show off, Porsches, whatever, let them all park where that event is so people hang around, spend some money to have fun.
Commissioner Miles.
One last place a town will look at that does something kind of like that is Lewisburg. I mean, I know, that might be something to look at. They do their, basically at Candy Cane Lane day, Candy Cane Lane and parade on the same day. So.
When I was in Rocky Mountain, we did the parade. In addition, I mean, there were a lot of things that went around it, but in addition to the parade, the, another nonprofit actually planned an event in a parking lot in downtown. So people would, were congregating there because it was kind of towards the end of the parade. But, you know, the, the J.C.'s, you know, brought in food trucks and music and had activities. And that was something another nonprofit just pulled together to, with the intent of keeping people in the downtown and creating community. So we can definitely encourage that and figure out a way to, like in the parade, to put some language that it's encouraged in that room.
Any other questions, comments? Have any more questions about the, comments for the parade, the Christmas parade?
Not for the parade, but I do have some other topics for the policy follow-up. So I will take the comments that you provided with the parade and, you know, I'll be available. If you want to email me some other things that might be of concern, to take a look at those as well. The next item that when looking through the comments that we got back over the event policy was that the, the language as far as if beer, wine and liquor, or liquor would be allowed on town property. And so I recognize and how that language probably was confusing. And so the intent was consistent with what the board has authorized on town property through its facility use agreement in that it only allow for beer and wine. And since your adoption, I've never seen it before, but like Old Raleigh Distillery, being a distillery, was able to acquire, being only to, well, they were able to acquire a special event policy to distribute their liquor at our Candy Cane Lane event. And I had not seen that before. I was not, I don't know if that's something that has recently changed. But I do think that one of the big questions for the board is if you want to see language adjusted to allow consideration by the board, to allow liquor, like beer, wine and/or liquor? Or do you want to keep it at just beer and wine? Because that will impact the ability, I don't, I don't think it. I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to hold others to one standard that we wouldn't hold ourselves to. And so, I think that that would impact in the future, like Old Raleigh Distillery, or Lick Life's Distillery, or any other that may be in our downtown, to be able to serve at Candy Cane Lane, or Spring Fest, or Rock the Block, or something like that. So, we, I wanted to get a good understanding if you want to keep it at beer and wine, or if you would like to be able to extend consideration to allow liquor as well.
Commissioner Laux?
Alcohol is alcohol. I think if you're gonna allow beer and wine, might as well add mixed drinks. And how do, as a police officer, how do I know what's in the cup?
Commissioner Harrison?
I think that we should just stick to beer and wine, personally. I think it's just less liability, but.
Commissioner Clark?
However, the, 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 Old Raleigh is open during those things, though. So, he serves within his building.
But they can't leave.
They can't leave the building.
They can't leave and walk through the event. And him getting a special event permit would allow him to serve in a container and serve out on the street in the event, and people be able to walk through the event. And I think, Chief Boykin shared, we didn't experience, I'm not advocating for or against, I just want to share. Having that be the first time this happened at one of our events, they did not have issues arise from it.
I think you could, I, I don't see any, as Larry says, you know, alcohol's alcohol.
I'm pretty much in agreement with Commissioner Laux and Commissioner Baxter, um, Clark. If you go, once, one cup of big drinks from Old Raleigh versus seven beers at, at another vendor, you're gonna have the same alcohol content or somewhere near the same, blood alcohol content anyway, so. Unless you're gonna limit the number of cocktails they can have, but I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see, see that. But anyway, Commissioner Miles?
Commissioner Baxter?
I said I'm open.
Commissioner Baxter?
In the alley, we allow liquor. So, I think that for those events, that's fine.
So, we will provide you with some updated language that makes that a little bit more clear. And one thing, I just want to make sure that we're open and upfront about, the town doesn't issue any permits. And so, just because you say it's allowed on town property does not mean that people planning these events can just have it. They still have to go through the state and follow all permitting. That responsibility is on the event planner and the, the people that hold the permits and who is selling and distributing.
Commissioner Miles?
I have one question. Now that we're utilizing the town hall more, how will that play in the factor for alcohol? Where that organization that's renting out the town hall, or whatever it may be, be able to bring alcohol, serve alcohol, how would that work? You may have said that, I may have missed, I'm not sure.
Pretty sure that's up for the board to review and consider at the time of the application when the board considers it. So, I don't believe, I've looked so much at it lately, but I don't believe it specifically says that it's never authorized at town hall. I think there's just a blanket statement that it's not allowed on town property without authorization from the board. And so, it would be very similar to a street event. When you authorize the rental here or the use of this facility, if they had alcohol, they would be requesting that information or that authorization at the same time.
And then they would still need a permit from the authorities that may be?
Yeah, any, anytime you're selling or distributing, you're gonna have to have some sort of permit from the state.
I'm saying if they weren't selling, if they were just having an event, had alcohol involved.
If you're gonna distribute, in my understanding, and how we as an organization should, what should expect anybody that's gonna have alcohol at one, at one of our facilities, is that they have a permit. Because if they have a permit, then there are certain responsibilities that they are held to and expectations that are held to on a state level. So, while technically you may not have to have that permit from the state to do just wine, the expectation would be that they have to go through that process. And that we would require that they go through that process because we want them to understand what that responsibility is. So, whatever the state requires, then we should require.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Next questions?
Are there other items from the event policy? I'm not, since we spoke in our individual meetings, I don't think I've received any other specific questions. I think Commissioner Miles, you emailed me today, and I don't know if you got the answer you needed. But if there's other items that you would like us to look into further or bring back information.
I would like to set up with the timeframe which can get, get with you some more. I'll set up some timeframe to get with you, and we'll discuss a few issues that I have. That's all. Thank you.
I, I'll email you tomorrow and we can set up a time.
Perfect, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments, or direct along? Thank you. Thank you, Sheila. And before we start on the next one, five-minute recess.
I like that. That would give people something like, I like it. I move over that. They were, you got to inform the citizen, they're well-trained citizens. They can get in the van, I say.
They can get some, some, something out of it.
That's it, that's it, I like it. Good?
Yes, sir, we're ready.
Mayor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike the previous presentations that are typical of a work session where we're providing the board with information as a catalyst to get the board to have some discussion among themselves and as a result, provide some feedback and direction to staff. The next topic is actually something where we need a board decision. And with that, I'll recognize Planning Director Michael Clark.
Once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. The final item on tonight's agenda is a request from a particular applicant regarding the Walperty Track. As you recall, this project is coming before you at some point for a joint public hearing as a conditional zoning request. We've had multiple conversations over the past couple of weeks and, and months regarding this project. The applicant has requested postponement to the February, the February joint public hearing. And the, the formal letter is included in your, in your packet tonight from Jason Barron from Morning Sorrow Law Partners. This will be the second request. The staff does have some concerns regarding postponement of this. Namely, this is the second time that this particular request has been postponed.
The other packet.
Okay, tracking, tracking, thank you.
Sorry about that. This will be the second time that this request is postponed, or postponed. As you may recall, at the, the December joint public hearing, you voted to postpone it to the January joint public hearing, which is scheduled for next Monday. Since meeting with the applicant, they're going to be actually providing pretty substantial revisions from what the staff has currently. So, the information that'd be coming before you on Monday night wouldn't even really be applicable. Having said that, there's also gonna be additional changes. One of the note, or one of the things of notation additionally is a postponement does not result in new notifications going out. The public act, or the action by the board in and of itself is notification to the public that this will be postponed to a date certain. By canceling it, which is what the staff is recommending doing, this results in new notifications going out, including mailings, paper of general circulation, as well as posting on site. This also provides additional time for the applicant to really go through those revisions to make sure that we get it right. It doesn't deny the project, and it doesn't prevent the applicant from moving forward in terms of those revisions. But it does create timing options for them. So, staff recommends canceling the joint public hearing. And as part of the motion, noting that it would have to go through re-notification to make sure that the adjacent property owners are aware that the meeting would be held. And note that the rationale for it is to allow for additional time for the applicant to provide those revisions. With that, I'm available if you have any questions. And we do also have a sample motion available for consideration if you choose to cancel the request.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Baxter?
So, by canceling this, which is the direction that I'm leaning towards, that means that they don't necessarily have to come back before us in February. They can take the time that they need to actually make sure that they get it right, work with staff to feel confident enough that what they're bringing before us is something that might actually get approved, correct?
That is correct.
So, they might be coming before us in April or May?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Miles?
So, if we don't cancel it, then what?
If you don't cancel it and you do not postpone it, we'll see you here on Monday night. It would be a fairly incomplete staff report noting that the project as presented is inconsistent with the recent conversations with the applicant. And it would essentially be a disservice to the public because what they would be seeing would not be what the developers' intentions are moving forward.
Is there something you can kind of give us why they keep changing it? Something, I mean, I know you can't go to specifics by staff-wise. Is there something you can kind of give us a little insight of why they keep postponing it?
As, with all conditional zonings and planned developments, we we work with, um, the developers and applicants in the best of our capacity to provide direction, not only in the context of the absolute language of the Unified Development Origins Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Master Plan, those things, but we also relay a lot of the concerns that you've expressed to us regarding this project as well as other projects. They also had, uh, their lead attorney, Jason Barron, was unavailable for some of those conversations and came in towards the tail end. My fortune, I have a very good working relationship with, um, Mr. Barron. And during the last conversations, he understood that not only was this going to have, um, staff not recommending approval, that as proposed, it was inconsistent with a lot of the statements that were, um, expressed by the elected officials at previous meetings. That triggered the, the first postponement. Now, we're, we're getting close to a good place, and it really helps to, um, it really helps to provide, uh, guidance for them to revise it. The other item of worth noting is the applicant, is the same applicant that did Weaver's Pond. So the majority of his projects were from standards and regulations that were established under the old zoning code. This is their first project that is under the new Unified Development Origins. They're starting to understand that the standards are much different than the previous development processes.
Okay, thank you. I just, I must, fellow commissioners, I've seen a couple of representative, the representatives for this community in the, in the, in here before, am I correct?
That's correct. The, um, the project lead for the development group was present at the December joint public hearing. And once this item was postponed during the break, he, he left. But we've met with, um, multiple representatives of the development firm since then.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
I don't see any reason not to cancel.
Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Laux?
As noted, I'm in favor of canceling the joint public hearing on January 23rd.
Any more questions, comments? Any more from Director Clark?
If the, the meeting is canceled, your presence is not required on Monday night. We'll still have the planning board come in as a training opportunity, though.
Uh, we ready for a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make one. I'd like to move to cancel the joint public hearing for the Walperty conditional zoning request to allow the applicant additional time to revise a request and to direct them to re-notify all of the surrounding community that the joint public, about the joint public hearing when it's scheduled.
We have a motion, is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Discussion. Uh, Commissioner Miles?
Would there be another community, would they have, they have another community meeting, to my understanding?
They would not be required to have another community meeting. That's a pre-application requirement as opposed to a public hearing notification requirement.
This, this would actually allow, because they would have to inform more of the community, this would allow more of the community to show up with their questions.
Because they're going to fall up on that bigger range.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, the, uh, there's, um, a couple of years ago, state law dictated permit of choice is the terminology. So whatever the regulations are in place at the time of application stand through the completion of the application unless the applicant is willing to go with the new regulations, in which case it's all or nothing. So this application was received when the public hearing notification was only 150 feet, and that would continue out until the completion of this project unless the applicant is willing to, uh, agree to that modification.
Well, let's ask them.
That's what I was going to say. We can set those conditions, I think. Can we set those conditions?
No, you cannot. Legally, we cannot dictate that they go with the new regulations until after a formal decision's been applied for the, the request.
No, I'm saying just the notification aspect of things, so we can't even hold that standard.
That's correct. The regulations that were in place at the time of application was 150 feet.
But that will give us additional time to let the community know that this is coming forth. And so, you know, we can do it through social media. We can do it through whatever means we're going to do it through, you know, just us so that a larger swath of the community knows that this is going to be coming up.
That's because I had citizens reach out to me about that. They're literally just touching one group. You go across the street, there's nothing else there. I think they're going down, it's one, just one, one row houses that are notified, and then the other side of the street doesn't get that notification. So that was a big concern for citizens. That is my reason for asking.
That's a good question.
Any, any other questions, comments? We ready for a roll vote? Commissioner Laux?
In favor of canceling?
Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Miles? Commissioner Baxter?
A question. Commissioner Laux, you are in favor of the motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the lights are going out.
Still here.
To adjourn. You, Commissioner Laux, is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Harrison.